Great.
Okay, you're recording.
All right, thank you. I'd like to call to order the February 23rd, 2021 Bridgewater Town Council Meeting to order. I'd like to ask everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Alrighty, I do have some condolences to convey. Condolences to the family of Edward F. Boynton upon his passing on January 21st, 2021. Mr. Boynton served in the United States Air Force during the Korean War. Also like to pass on condolences to the family of Alan T. Morgan upon his passing on January 23rd, 2021. Mr. Morgan served aboard the USS Ajax AR-6 in the United States Navy during the Vietnam War. I'd also like to pass on condolences to the family of Kenneth P. Gothier upon his passing on February 11th, 2020, 2021. Mr. Gothier served the United States Navy during the Korean War. I'd like to have a moment's silence for those veterans and any other veterans or first responders who have passed. Thank you. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A, period of 18 of the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There'll be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. I'd also like to remind everyone that this meeting is being aired live and also being recorded. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 2nd, 2021.
So moved.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Nothing.
Mr. Souza?
Nothing.
Any questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Bodas. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't think Pete's here yet. Uh, Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, do not have any announcements? Do not have any proclamations? Citizens, open forum, if there are any citizens who would like to speak, uh, we ask that you keep it to three minutes. Uh, before speaking, please state your name and your street for the record. Are there any citizens that would like to speak during? Citizens, open forum. Ms. Nary?
Yes. Pat Nary, Lakeside Drive. I know that a little bit later, the question that is going to be on the ballot regarding marijuana will be coming up again. And it's already been discussed, but I do have a couple of questions. I was wondering if the counselor that proposed this question has a plan and has that been submitted for either negative or positive results? I'm curious to know because the question itself is rather vague and I didn't see any supporting information for the question. He indicated that federal and state level show that public support has changed. So I'm just wondering if there is positive or negative. I know that that's what he's looking for, but what will he plan to do with that information? And, um, it's just a misleading question. It could have been clarified, but I know, as I said, it's already been discussed, but those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens who would like to speak? Mr. Ivaldi?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Uh, yeah, I have Mr. Ivaldi and then I'll figure out who the next person is. Go ahead, Mr. Ivaldi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ed Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane. I'd like to take this opportunity tonight to recognize several counselors for their willingness to take a stand and do what's right. Taking us back to a little over a year ago, you'll recall that Counselor Wood was in the process, excuse me, of using a charter loophole to secure himself a fifth term on the council. Let me remind you that the design of the charter is currently written and approved by the citizens of Bridgewater back in 2010 is very clear. And that was to give every resident of the opportunity to serve as a town counselor for four three-year terms or a total of 12 years. Even though what Counselor Wood did was technically legal, it was not in line with the intent of the term limit language in the charter. Unfortunately, Counselor Wood didn't agree and found a way around it. That brings me to acknowledging and commending two counselors tonight who have either already reached or in the process of reaching the end of their terms as counselors, but they've chosen to honor the spirit of the charter as written. Counselors Colum Bodas and Fitzgibbons. As two of the original nine counselors, I want you to know that many people in town have watched you both to see what you would do with regard to the term limit situation. And ultimately, both of you have decided to take positions to embrace the charter and do what's proper. And we applaud you for that. It says a lot about your personal character and your integrity. And for that, we are all very thankful. Thankful also for your many years of dedicated service to the town and thankful for your willingness to stand for what is fair and just. Even though you both will eventually be moving on to other opportunities, there is no doubt you will continue to serve Bridgewater in other ways. And we all look forward to seeing your continued contributions in the years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, there was another person I, that would like to speak. And I heard them, but I have no idea who it was.
Yeah, there was a person that was calling in, but I don't.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Hello, yes.
Hi, my name is George Moskita. I'd like to speak about the application for a lodging house at 84 South Street.
Could you give, could you give your street address, please?
It's 76 South Street.
Okay, go right ahead.
I'd like to speak against the, uh, the application for a permit for the following reasons. I've lived here for, uh, over a decade now and I knew, knew the previous owners, the Dutras. And, uh, they owned the house for generations and it was always an owner occupied house. I think the new proposal, um, doesn't fit in with the neighborhood zoning. Uh, it's mostly one and two-family owner occupied. I'm also concerned about the, uh, the parking issue. Um, it's not clear what the occupancy would be. And, uh, as you know, this is a very busy area of South Street. I think that'll be a problem also. And I wonder, a lodging house is a high hazard use. And I wonder if it's been required to meet the current building codes. Um, code upgrades, uh, to egress, stairs, alarms, sprinklers. And, uh, have they declared what the actual occupancy would be? Uh, I believe they pulled a permit in October and the value of that permit is $4,000. I don't see how they could meet the current building codes. I'm familiar with the Dutras' house and it was in very poor shape. I don't see how they could meet the current building codes, um, for an amount like that. Uh, so those are my concerns. It seems like this permit process might be being used as a way to circumvent, the zoning process and, uh, and building codes. Uh, so that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during Citizens' Open Forum?
Mr. George?
Yes.
I actually have received two chats from, um, citizens who wish to speak. The first one is Savannah.
Okay.
Hello, this is Jeff in Savannah at 20 Maple Avenue.
Okay, go right ahead.
Yeah, so we're, we're a neighboring property on that same exact issue. Uh, and so we just, you know, we got a letter, I think it was last week, that this was, this was happening and there wasn't a lot of explanation around all the, exactly the same issues that the prior speaker brought up in terms of parking, will the owner occupied? What the occupancy will be, um, whether or not the criteria are met in terms of, you know, fire alarms and all of those sorts of things. And so we just, we share that exact same, um, those same exact items.
Thank you. And one other person?
Uh, yes, mister, he's raising his hand, Ms. Anthony Spitalari.
Hey folks, good evening. Good to be with you, you know, picking up from, uh, that on 84 South Street as well. Um, on Union Street, as, by the way. You know, over the last 48 hours, you know, my wife and I have had probably a dozen residents in the area reach out regarding this. And, um, you know, we, we asked that the committee would oppose it for now. You know, until there's more visibility. You know, we haven't done a lot of research and discovery, but one of the things that's come up is that the applicant is, is also an owner of a sober living house in Middleborough. And, um, you know, the concern for the residents would be, you know, if that in fact is the intent of this as it moves forward. Clearly, if so, that's something that we wouldn't want in the neighborhood. You're 1,500 feet within a school, it has, you know, roughly 700 students, you know, that are elementary and middle school age. So, you know, clearly, we haven't had enough time to gather all the facts, but, you know, certainly there needs to be greater visibility when it comes to, you know, the youth of the area in the school. And there's a place for, um, there's a place for restoration, there's a place for sober living. I just don't think it's, you know, 1,500 feet away from a school. So I think that we, we deserve some more clarity and visibility there.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else who'd like to speak? Uh, Mr. Buehl?
Kick Buehl, 10 Field, Chris Drive. I too, uh, found out about this, um, very recently. It seems like it came up awful quick. So I would hope that, um, the council, um, would take that into consideration with some of the concerns. What I will tell you though is that I would hope that, um, as someone who's been in recovery for 26 years, um, I don't think, um, posing, uh, a threat to a school is a way to get, uh, get this turned down. I just, uh, I, I think that's reaching. Um, I think it's, uh, making a lot of assumptions that, um, can't be made. I can see that, um, that, that, that the people that live in this area would be concerned with parking and with traffic and with, but I just really hope that, um, um, we're very careful. And everybody's very careful, um, in presenting their views about this. And I just don't see where, um, tying it into the school, um, is something that, um, would be justified in any way, shape or form. Thank you.
Next person, i- all I see is Paul. So if you could just state your name and your street address, that'd be great.
I'm Paul Malone from 21 Maple Avenue in Bridgewater. I just found out about this, this past, uh, weekend myself. I've been a resident of Maple Avenue for 47 years. I knew the original Mrs. Dutra, who passed away and her son took it over. And I'll give you a little bit of quick history. Mrs. Dutra ran that as a lodging house because when her husband died, she didn't want to lose the home. And she converted it to a lodging house. And I believe the license is for five lodgers. And she passed away a few years ago and her son took it over with a renewable license. Please bear in mind, this is not a zoning situation. It's a license that needs to be annually renewed. I have done some investigation. License has not been renewed since 2019. So the license has expired. And the rules in the town zoning or town bylaws state that if any non-conforming, which that would be, use of any structure or land or both is changed to a conforming use, it shall not thereafter be put into any non-conforming use. This is on section 5.20, page 18. Thus, I will go to page 113 of the regulations, which changed on July 22nd, 2016, that if, if, uh, the town will no longer allow any new lodging permits to anyone in the town. This is an expired permit. As far as I'm concerned, it was a single-family residence that had a non-conforming use for a permit, not a zone. So there's no three-year waiting limit. It's an annual renewal. It is now reverted back since 2019 to a, a conforming use, which is a single-family residence.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes, um, I, I would like to speak if possible.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Kern.
Hi, Fred Kern, 77 South Street. Um, I, I would like to, um, uh, agree with the point, um, that, uh, I live right across the street from the residents and I see all the children walking by daily, uh, both directions, off to the elementary school, off to the middle school. And, uh, I think that this is a high-traffic area for children. And as a pediatrician, I'm concerned about, um, some of the things they may see or not see, or activities they may see or not see. I just don't think it's the, um, kind of environment that I would want, um, my patients to be walking through. Um, I'm not sure I would feel, uh, necessarily safe with, uh, with my children walking through that area. And I just think that there are better locations, uh, for this type of, um, establishment. And, uh, and as someone that cares for, as well as teenagers in recovery, I, I have a heart for those in recovery for sure. Uh, but I also have a heart for the children and I'm concerned for their safety. And, um, I just don't think that, uh, we want to, uh, go down that road and jeopardize, um, any of, any of safety for our children in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during Citizens' Open Forum?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, Dan Buren, 66 South Street.
Go ahead, Mr. Buren.
I too am opposed to this. I just live two doors down and, uh, just found out about this literally yesterday. For a lot of reasons that have already been, um, stated. I just don't think it's a good fit for the neighborhood right now, uh, the way it is. One and two-family residents for the most part. And anybody that drives, uh, up and down, um, South Street with the other apartments up at the end, the parking is a real issue and it's very dangerous intersection, South and Grove Street. And I just would hope that the council would seriously consider opposing this application for what all the other residents have already said, uh, they've said it more eloquently than I could. But I just don't think it's a right fit at this time and the way it's, the process is taking place. And I don't think they can do it based on what Mr. Malone said either. I was gonna say what he, I had a little research on this with the Dutras had it. I thought it had expired and I didn't think this was an issue that was gonna come up again. But, um, I'm hoping that, uh, we could buy, get a little more time to, to, to look at this and hopefully tonight, uh, if it comes to a vote, you would oppose it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there one else that hasn't spoken who would like to speak? Any other residents? And I don't see anyone. Do you see anyone?
I'm sorry. No, I don't see anybody who has not previously spoken.
Okay.
Paul Malone is, um, waving his hand.
Uh, Mr. Malone, you've already, I mean, let's you have something new to add. You've already spoken on the matter. Is there any, anything else you'd like to add? You're, you're on mute.
Yeah, better.
Yep.
I believe when Mrs. Dutra was given her license, it was because it was owner occupied.
All right. And do you see anyone else? Okay.
Nope.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item E, appointments. Conservation Committee, Wendy Smith. I will entertain a motion to appoint.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Chase?
No, nothing.
Any other counselors? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to Open Space Committee, Lauren Webb. I'll entertain a motion to appoint.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Nope.
Any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to Elder Affairs Commission Associate Member, Richard Gopin. I'll entertain a motion to appoint.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Souza, any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None, thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Mrs. Loesch? Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to item D, Cultural Council. Jessica Manning, I'll entertain a motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Wood, any questions?
Uh, no questions. She's, uh, gonna make an excellent addition to the Cultural Council. I've known her for years and she lives nearby, so excellent addition. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Nothing, thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Ga- thank you. Eight in favor, none against.
Okay. I have the time is 7:24. Moving on to order, oh, FY21-026, laying out an acceptance of a private way, Stone Hill Lane. Uh, I'll declare the meeting starting at 7:25. Uh, is the petitioner here or if not, Mr. Dutton, if you want to speak on this?
I think, uh, Mr. President, technically, I'm, I'm, uh, supporting this. Uh, it's in precinct two. Uh, it's, it's a way that, you know, it's off of, uh, Grange Park and, uh, everything seems to be up to date. I don't know if Mr. Dutton can add anything.
I can only add that it's been reviewed by all the relevant departments in the town engineer and there are no issues, uh, with the, uh, road at this time.
I, I was more looking to see if the petitioner was here. I'm, I don't think so. Right, Mr. Dutton?
I don't believe so, no, sir.
Okay. Um, are there any general questions from the public? And I don't see any. Do you?
No, I do not.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public speaking in favor of the order? I don't see anyone. Do you, Em?
I don't see anyone with a hand raised, no.
Is there anyone from the public speaking in opposition of the order? I don't see anyone. Do you, Em?
No.
Okay. Are there any questions from town counselors? I do not see any. Okay, I will close the hearing at 7:27. Laying out and accepting of private way motions. All right, I will entertain a motion to find that the laying out is required by common convenience and necessity.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Mr. Chase?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve laying of the way.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None, thank you.
Mr. Rushton?
No, thanks.
Any other counselors? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay. Moving on to item B, under F, petition P2021-004, new lodging house license, 84 South Street, Norma Jean Bagley and William F. Saber, DBA, The South Street House. All right, I will declare the, the hearing open at 7:29. Um, is the petitioner here or if not, Mr. Dutton, would you like to touch upon it?
Uh, I believe the petitioner is here, Mr. President. Uh, they may be muted, though. If you could give them a second just to unmute, which is probably in the bottom left-hand corner of the screen. A little microphone with a line through it.
Sometimes the spacebar can unmute you as well.
All right, my, my, did that work?
No.
You can hear me.
You're fine. We can, we can hear you.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you could identify, if you could identify yourself for the record, that would be great.
I'm Norma Jean Bagley.
And I'm Bill Saber.
Okay.
It kinda keeps going in and out, but you can hear us?
We can hear you.
Okay, all right.
Was to say something?
Do you have any question? I mean, I don't know where to start.
If you just wanted to give an overview of, of the application, I mean, something, that's up to you.
All right. Okay, so we bought the house. Um, we've seen this house and, um, it's a very nice old house with a lot of rooms in it. And we've thought about a lodging house off and on through the past few years. And, um, when we looked at it, we saw that it was perfect. It has, um, eight bedrooms, it's four bathrooms. Does need a lot of work, like the gentleman said, which we've been working on since like October. Took, uh, four dumpsters. Took four dumpsters to empty out the stuff inside. It needs a lot of work, so we're working on it and it's gonna still take a while to get to a livable situation. You know, we, we think we'd be good at having a lodging house and if, you know, we, obviously, we'd want the goal would have people who are in sobriety, not fresh off the, the chart or whatever, people that are trying to get their lives back together. You know, we're very involved in, in sobriety and stuff like that, and our thought would be, we would like it to be for women only. I understand the gentleman's concern about people walking by, which would be one of my concerns also. Therefore, they would be, nobody would be in the front, even though it has a lovely deck, I wouldn't want people hanging out in the front. You know, we just want to help people and, you know, we're gonna do it over really nice, and as far as the parking, you know, there's only so many spaces for parking there to begin with, if, you know, the people who go by know that there's only so much room, so you'd only, I'd only have as enough parking as there is the room for, which is probably like five cars, because I saw, we, Mrs. Dutra kept a, a log about everything, and she had the rules about the cars and, you know, she had, you know, we actually got a lot of tips from all her notes, actually. We definitely decided against ever making it with college students because of, you know, that's all about partying and we're not, we're not for that at all. We definitely want it up to code. And there's already this, inside the, the fire alarms, the lights, the emergency lights, the exit signs. There's plenty of ways in and out. It's a very large house. You know, we, we take, we would, we take pride in our, in our, in our, in the work that we do. We, we have an apartment house, an old house that we've done over, and it's nice, and you know, we carefully picked our tenants and everyone's happy and nobody ever has any complaints. We definitely are hands-on. There, we'd be there very, although, we're not gonna live there, but we'd have somebody managing the place and we would be there frequently. And I, I kind of think it's unfair to say, like, it's kind of like saying that people that are in sobriety are undesirable, and I don't think that's really fair, because I know lots of people who are very, you know, haven't drank or done drugs in ten, twenty years, or even sometimes a year, and that their, their lives, it's not fair to say that they're undesirable people for the neighborhood, because probably pretty much everybody in the neighborhood knows people who are, who've, who are in sobriety or struggling with drinking or drugs or whatever, and they're at the end of their rope and they have no place to go. You know, I think it's, I'd want somebody to have a nice place to get a fresh start. Because we care about, we care about, that's something that we care about, and we definitely wouldn't want it to be an eyesore in the neighborhood, because I, I understand, I would, you know, give it a thought, and I understand we're, you know, down the street from a school or whatever, but, you know, it's not like people are gonna be outside, you know, the people living, they're going, getting jobs, they're working, they're, you know, enjoying a nice place to live, and they're not gonna be outside staring down little kids that walk by. I think that's a little overdramatic. I'm a parent, and, you know, I, I would, we would make it as, as, you know, that it's not, you probably won't even know that it's a lodging house, to be quite honest with you. You know, we're doing it overnight, we take pride in the property, it's, it's gonna look a lot better than it has in a long, long time. The late, one of the ladies that lives, butts us, we've already told her that we would put a, a vinyl fence up, so that would give her some privacy. The, the people that, about the back, with this, we, we share a big tree that we're gonna share and cut part of it down, and we'd be willing to put up, you know, like Cypress trees to give privacy, because, you know, for their area. I don't know much about the other side of me, but we're willing to put up privacy if that, you know, things that make it more desirable. It's just something that we really think we'd like to do, and we think we'd be good at it, and would, place is gonna be, be nice when it's done. That's my share. You want to add to that?
Can I speak for a minute? I've been in sobriety for thirty-five years, and, you know, what I got from one person was that it sounds like a good idea, just not in my neighborhood. And that's sad, because, you know, drug addiction and alcoholism affect so many families, everybody, you know, most people have somebody in their family that suffers from it, or a friend, or a coworker. Now, these are people that are in sobriety. They're not drinking and drugging. They're, they're getting themselves back into society. You know, and, and I did have a sober house in Middleborough for four years. I was forced to sell it through a divorce, and for the last ten or twelve years, this has been a dream of ours. You could actually talk to our tenants in our house, you could talk to all four units. If one of them complained about anything, I would rescind my application. And as far as the, there's supposed to be a two-year window with this application, from what we understand from the building inspector. We would be willing to address anybody's concerns. It's a big, beautiful house, and I don't see how you could find someone that's gonna buy that house with, I don't know, a family of fifteen people. I don't know, but, you know, I don't, all I say is if you could just give us a chance, if, if, if it's not, you know, perfectly run, then take our license away. Give us a shot. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public?
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, this is Savannah from Maple Avenue. I just want to ask about the, you know, the, the owners mentioned not wanting it to be a college house because of the potential for partying, and I totally understand that, that's an uncontrollable kind of thing. If that type of behavior is uncontrollable and the owners are not on site, how would other behaviors be regulated and managed?
Okay.
All right, well, obviously, we'd have a man, gonna have a manager there who lives there and is on top of all that, and we will be there frequently. We don't live that far away. We just live in East Bridgewater. It's not even like eight minutes away. You know, because we like to keep up on looking at what's going on. I want to know what's going on and actually be a part of helping these people, to be quite honest with you. So I'd be coming in, talking to them, you know, any issues. You know, people need help getting jobs, you know, if there's any medical issues, I'm a nurse, you know. The goal is not to have, obviously, to have people, undesirable behaviors. That's the whole point, is to, you try to change those behaviors you had when you were doing things that wrecked your life. The whole point is to take on new behaviors and new character qualities to make you a better person. That's the goal of, that's my goal, is what I, I would bring to it, is to help these people.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I know that there's a, a couple of the sober houses in Bridgewater, and they're not well-run, and I can understand people's concerns. Like, we would be like totally opposite from that, you know, so, thanks.
Are there any other general questions from the public? Okay, Mr. Spittarelli, and if I'm butchering your name, I apologize.
No, it's Spittarelli, that's really good, thanks for that, and, you know, just to clarify too, also sober for twenty years, praise God. Look, the question I have would be, would be this. You know, there's a lot of great statements about, you know, how we're gonna do things and the way we're gonna do things, and everyone deserves a second chance. What are the credentials that, that the applicant has in recovery beyond, you know, you can talk to our, our tenants and the people that have been through our program? You know, outside of being a, you know, a medical nurse, what credentials and history is there specifically dealing with people in treatment? And what is the measuring stick by, by which, you know, the applicants come and are able to live there? Are they sober for six months? Are they drug-free for a year? What is the, the background checks, you know, because, like, listen, it's not about being mean-spirited, there's a direct correlation between crime and, and abuse with people that use drugs and alcohol. Again, you know, really important stuff when you're talking about putting something like that fifteen hundred feet away from, from innocent youth, so just, just a really honest, fair question. I, I don't think it's a reach, you know, when you talk about the lives of, of this next generation, that's all.
I'm just having a memory. Well, my husband's been in sobriety, like you said, for thirty-five years, go to meetings, so he's done a lot of work with, you know, with, with different people doing steps and all that stuff. I work in an emergency room and deal with a lot of that type of stuff that comes in like all the time. I, I, I think, like what you were saying, what are the, gonna be the credentials for them to come in? I would say a minimum of six months. Sober, been in a, you know, had gone through treatment. That type of thing, and going now, really, like the next step up, where you're really not, you know, getting a job, getting back to work, maybe taking, going to school. That type of thing, but I'm, I'm definitely in the agreement of over six months. You know, we still, you know, this is still a little ways away, you know, to figure out all the exact details. We also, I don't know, people have already gone by there, that we own a, a pool business, Pool Pros. My secretary, she's, works at the Edwina Martin House and deals with women there and in the sobriety. She's been, like, I think, like, six or seven years herself. She's very good at managing stuff and that type of thing. She would be involved helping us also. So, you know, I, I want to fine-tune it, like, you know, I haven't made out an exact plan, because this, this place isn't gonna be ready for really, for people to live in there, probably till next.
Six months to a year.
Yeah, because it's that much work to be done and to.
We're on a fourth permit now. As far as credentials, we could do background checks.
Right, we can do, yeah, we would do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far as like the amount of time they've had sober, like, that's, it's kind of hard, because it's, you know, you get someone that's, that they go into treatment, and you know, when they come out, some of them have no place to go, so to say, you know, you're not gonna take someone until they're six months sober. It's, it's more of a stepping stone for like the first year, year and a half, or two years of somebody's sobriety.
They would need something like that.
Yeah, so I wouldn't want to give anybody the wrong idea. As far as like my credentials, like, I don't have any licenses or anything, but, you know, I sponsor people. I guess it's just my experience, you know. That's what I have, you know, and a, and a, and a desire to, to help recovering alcoholics and addicts get their lives together.
Just try to do the best we can. I mean, it's kind of a learning process, a learning curve, but I think we want it to be as smooth as possible. We don't want, I don't want criminals. I mean, I understand, like, you know, I'm a regular person too, and I, you know, I understand everyone's concerns, totally.
And there'd be drug tests, you know, at least twice a week, probably three times a week. You have a company that comes in and does urine to make sure everyone's clean and sober, you know, and we'd be willing to take some suggestions too, and, you know, people's concerns.
Paul, I, I don't know your last name. Could you give me your last name so I can?
My name is Malone.
Malone.
Twenty-one Maple Avenue.
Yep. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I, yeah, I have a couple. At first, in, 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 we had a sober house next door to me for over twenty years with both men and women. And it was not a pleasant experience, and I was raising my family at that time. There were many times we had to go out and pick up booze bottles. We had to take pillows and mattresses out of our yard that they dumped in our yard. People parked in our driveway without asking. It was not well-managed.
Needles.
Yes, we had needles on our property. As far as urine testing, the owner that owned the house next door to me was falsifying urine testing through some sort of a source. So it was opened up to a lot of negatives.
Rangers coming and going.
There were, yeah, there were people coming and going at all hours of day and night. It was not managed well.
Mr. Malone, do you have, do you have a? Mr. Malone, do you have a question? We're asking for.
I just want to restate. Okay, the question is, it was stated earlier that there was a two-year lapse. There is no two-year lapse. It's an annual renewal of a license, and when license is not renewed after one year, it expires. The house should revert back to a residence.
It was a rooming house for thirty years.
Are there any other general questions, I believe?
I have a question. This is Jeff.
Okay.
On Maple Lab again. Yeah, first of all, I just want to say that I really love and respect the fact that you, you have a, a passion for healing and kind of redemption, like, that's, that's amazing, and, and every community should, should, honestly. My wife and I, we support Teen Challenge, and this is an area that's near and dear to our heart. But as we know from Teen Challenge, you know, many of the state's programs, private programs, as well as the public programs, have a very, very poor success rate, I believe, below ten percent success rate, where the folks that go into those programs end up back in the criminal system and in relapse, again. So it, it's a hard process, right, to go through, and Teen Challenge has had, you know, over seventy percent success rate because of their incredible attention to, to, to being present with, with the, the people as they go through that process. And, and so, you know, I like that you mentioned that there will be somebody on site. I, I guess my, my question is, what are the guarantees around that, and, you know, is this a, a certified, somebody who's certified for addiction counseling? Are they gonna be on site, living there and working there full-time? And what are kind of the guarantees around that, to ensure that, you know, this, this is something that is controlled, because if, if it's not, you know, that everyone else's concerns about kind of children or all those sorts of things are legitimate concerns, when there's people who are really suffering through real difficulties, trying to, 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 to grow and heal without the help to do so, and with access and opportunity to, to do things that could be harmful to themselves as well as others.
I like, I, we too support Teen Challenge, and I actually worked there back in the eighties, so I know all about their success rate, and it actually was even more than seventy percent. It used to be like eighty, eighty-five percent due to its Christian philosophy. I actually learned a lot about stuff I, when I, when I worked there about, that's where I get the whole thing about changing your character qualities. There's, like, what do I want to call it, like, not like classes you can do that help people change their behaviors, and, yeah, we bring in stuff like that to help them. I mean, I don't know if I, you know, we can, obviously, people need, a lot of people need counseling, can set that up, bring them. You know, this is, I mean, personally, I'd, I'd probably like to have a Bible study if there, you know, myself there. You know, I tend to want it to be more Christian-based, to be quite honest. So I understand your concerns, and, yeah, people can revert back. I, I know all about, like I said, I work there. And some people leave and they just, they don't, they can't do it, but, you know, we're trying to help, and if, if people can't do it, they leave, they're not gonna stay there. I'm not gonna have people, there's not gonna be bottles, there's not gonna be needles, there's not gonna be trash. It's probably gonna end up looking one of the nicest places, the grass and the, everything's gonna look very nice, believe me, and I want to help people, but if they don't want to be helped, they're not sticking around, because that's not what we're about. We don't want people to be upset. We don't want bad things happening there, obviously. You know. You know. I don't, I. I just can't, I would not tolerate that if I'm there frequently, you know. Obviously, if I saw one thing, I'd be out of my mind, and I would address that issue right away. We're not going to be like any of those other sober houses that we've heard about in the area. We know plenty of people that have been to them, and we know that it's. They're bad, and we don't want to be like that. We're not going to be like that, and, you know, you'll 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 have. Going to just see that it's not like that. I can't, I don't know what else to say. We can't. You know, until it's up and running and and, you know, until you can find fault. Um, I think we should have a chance to prove that we could be one of the better people. In the community that do stuff like that. That's that's all I can say.
So back to my my specific question was, will there be a full-time certified?
Yes, full-time manager there, yes, living there, yes, and we'll be very, very picky who that is, believe me.
Are there any other, are there any other general questions? And I don't see anyone, do you?
I'm scrolling through one more time.
Mr. Malone, do you have a general question?
Yes, uh, how many residents are in this application?
It says up to twelve, but. That's would be, I I mean, I don't even know if we'll go to that, but. It has eight bedrooms. Um, two are huge, that, you know, probably two people. Would be in each one.
I I believe the last permit was for five people.
There was one for nine at one point with, and plus the duchess were living there. Um, one of those bedrooms would be for the manager and um, we would be there a lot. I mean, you could. You can walk by this property right now, and I guarantee you, you can't find a piece of trash on the ground anywhere because I'm a fanatic. I all I can say is, just please give us a chance, like. You can always take the license away, but you you won't. You won't.
Are there any other general questions?
Sorry, maybe this is a bad question, but if that, if the licenses are twelve and and the parking is only for five, I'm confused as to how that. All that works out. I don't know who that's a question.
I would say if if. Most people, a lot of those people probably don't have licenses, and. It's only going to be so many cars, and if they had a car, they're not going to be able to have it there, so there's only enough room, you know, legitimately, like for five cars. Five cars comfortably, you know, maybe six. I mean, when we're over there, we have a couple trucks, you know. Couple car, we, you know, when we're working over there, there's enough for probably, you know, three, four trucks and car. In the dumpster.
Are there any other general questions?
Uh, I just got a text from Mr. I'm sorry, Anthony.
Go right ahead.
No, that's okay. Um, so the the specific question I have is really for the committee in the town. You know, listen, we've heard, you know, a lot of things tonight. Clearly, there lacks visibility here. The question I have is, does the town have any responsibility or the committee to, you know, further look into, you know. Investigating who the applicants are that'll be residing at the house, you know. Background check screening as it relates to the children in the school and the community, so. You, once this thing happens, whether it's a trial basis or not, okay, is totally irrelevant because you can be. You know, weakened a trial and because of lack of visibility, have something horrific happen that impacts, you know, the life of a young person. So, the question I have is, has the town looked into or sought counsel as to what responsibility it has? You know, to make sure that, you know, it's in, it's, you know, well within their right to approve something where we lack such visibility. From a program that, you know, respectfully does not have the credentials to do something like this.
So, within this process, we will get to uh questions from the counselors. That would probably be the appropriate area to just discuss things of that nature. So what I'd like to do is move on to anyone from the public that is here to support the petitioner. Is there anyone here from the public for support? And I don't see anyone, do you? Is there one in the public speaking in opposition?
I mean, beyond the conversations that we've already had, I I think that it makes sense to 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 oppose this uh. At this time, um, just given, given the questions that still seem unanswered around the. Uh, license and um the legality of all of the stuff.
And I I oppose as well, if that wasn't clear.
I oppose, I oppose.
Is there anyone else in opposition?
As I, uh, Mr. President Dan Buren, sixty-six South Street, as I mentioned in public forum, just to put it on record with the exact petition here. I am in opposition to this. Thank you.
Savannah of Maple have, uh, also I oppose.
Okay, is there? This is the toughest part of this whole Zoom thing. Is there anyone else? Okay, moving on to questions from town counselors. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, and and before I ask my question, uh, Mr. President, if I could indulge just a minute. I've asked Anne to have the zoning ordinance um ready, and uh she can share a screen. I I'd like us to look at the exact zoning before I ask my questions. That's okay with you? If you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, let, give me one second to just grab the right screen.
And it's the best town clerk that we've ever had. I mean, the council clerk. Council clerk, county council clerk.
Sorry. Here we go. I've gotten a number of screens open. Hey, can you, can you see what I, can you see the the?
Yes, and if you can scroll down just a little bit. So what I want to draw everyone's attention to is paragraph three. And paragraph three talks about when we amended the zoning uh for lodging houses. And the key words are no additional lodging houses permitted with any zone district in the town of Bridgewater. Only pre-existing, and this is not a pre-existing lodging house legally operating on the data passage of the amendment. They receive a a license to continue, the word continue operation. And that that brings back uh what Mr. Malone was talking about. Um, so, oh, so there's, there's an issue here and. It's clear, crystal clear from the zoning code that this license is out of order. And should not have reached this point in in front of the council. And I looked through the paperwork, there was a lot of work done up to this, so, so my question, and I'll, I'll address it to um. And and unless someone else wants to leave this up, we can, we can pull back to the to the pictures. But it, but I'll address my question um through you to the town manager and and the, I see the um. Community and Economic Director is online too.
Point of order.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I I I know Counselor Wood loves to play an attorney on the town council, but we do have an actual town attorney who might want to. On anything.
Well, my my question first is, what was the process to bring this license forward? Because it clearly. Does not meet the zoning codes of Bridgewater.
Uh, you're you're not an attorney, Mr. Wood, that's what I'm trying to say. Mr. Mr. Rollins could probably opine on whether or not it does meet that. And then we can talk about the process that got here, so I'd like to put.
I I'll, I I'll take, I've got it, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Mr. Rollins, would you, would you like to? Make some comments, please.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to certainly opine on what's been said so far, so obviously, without the benefit of having. Any documentation in front of me and taking, you know, the the testimony we've heard today in the hearing. Uh, for, you know, word, which, which as the council goes. You may want to take in some actual documentary information, review past permits. Make sure that there, if, whether or not there is a actual lapse in time. Um, but taking every assumption uh based on every statement that's been made. Um, I understand where Mr. Wood's coming from. I think there's some certainly validity to that. Um, because if it was operated as a legal. Uh, lodging house at one point, and that use then became a conforming. Residential use, it was no longer operating in that way, then Mr. Wood's premise is is correct.
President, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Rollins, but thank you. I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing for uh two more weeks until our next council meeting, because it seems there are legal. Issues implicated. Um, there's certainly a substantial neighborhood opposition. Um, I I'm sure many of the neighbors want to get more information from the town, which I'm sure the town. Manager can provide to them uh as as needed. Um, I I just think at this point, it's not really. Right for even any more discussion other than just, let's regroup in two weeks and see where we are, because there's just too many. Questions for me that to continue this discussion doesn't seem fruitful, so I'd make a motion to continue the hearing until our next meeting.
Now, the motion to continue.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Everything in my motion.
Mr. Gallagher.
No, I I agree. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. I I I don't even. Think the applicant is even ready for the license yet, because they said they have six months to a year of construction or. Rehab work to do on the house, so I don't, I think there's plenty of time to sort this out and answer everybody's concerns and to. Act on this tonight.
Any other counselors? Mr. Wood.
Yeah, uh, in the documentation, I'd like to see the series of licenses, because I know we didn't approve anything in twenty twenty. We didn't approve anything in twenty eighteen. I can't, couldn't get to the packet in twenty nineteen, so I doubt there was a. License renewal in twenty nineteen, because I would have raised this issue then. Um, and and so I I think it's been since at least two thousand seventeen that there's been a lapse in license, so if that documentation can be. Provided to that'd be helpful.
Any other questions from any other counselors?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Rushton.
I I don't necessarily have a question, but I would just like on record my frustration. At that this has gotten this far at this point, and is this much of a mess? That we have to now move this down the road. It it never should have been before us. It's clear there's a number of issues and. I'm just very frustrated for that and frustrated for the residents who have had to sit through this hearing tonight to find out that there's no resolve.
Duly noted. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this requires a roll call vote to continue to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch. Mrs. Loesch. Thank you. Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons. Seven in favor, one against.
Okay, moving on to. It is now eight oh five, moving on to petition P twenty twenty-one dash zero zero five. Transfer of on-premise all-alcohol license and pledge of inventory license. From San Esfoam DBA sugarcane to Teen Yatip Inc. DBA sugarcane Thai restaurant. Uh, is the petitioner here?
Yeah, yes, good evening, board. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney for the petitioner. Along with me is uh Teen. Franowitz. The tough pronunciation, I'm probably butchering it, uh, but Teen, uh, who is known to me is here as well. Uh, Teen is the one hundred percent shareholder of the corporation. He's also the proposed license manager.
Team, would you like, do you, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I I can certainly just give the um, the the commissioner just a rundown as to uh what's before them, so this is the transfer of the. Uh, all-alcohol package store license, uh, had been used uh for quite some time at the sugarcane Thai restaurant. Uh, my client uh purchased this restaurant back in December. Uh, the seller was in need of moving on. Uh, so we purchased the business, uh, we transferred the common vicular license. He's been operating there for a couple of months now. Um, and and we've just been putting together the license process, so this would be the last piece of it, which is the transfer of the existing license. Um, Teen has been in the restaurant industry. I actually worked at Chatterbox, uh, starting as a server, moving up to a manager. Uh, this has been his opportunity to open up his own restaurant, so uh with that, he understands the responsibilities that come along with operating a license. Uh, all of the uh servers will require to be alcohol tip certified. Um, and, you know, I I can certainly answer any questions that the board may have, and and Teen can as well. Uh, the one thing I would say is the seller has financed the transaction, the purchase, uh, so there is a pledge on that note going back to the prior owner.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public? I don't see any, and do you?
No, I do not.
Right, is there anyone from the public speaking in favor of the petition? I don't see anyone, and do you?
I see Dr. Hunt has a thumbs up.
I guess that's a good thing. Is that a good thing?
I'm not sure.
I can't see Dr. Hunt. He keeps cutting in and out.
There he is.
He's waving now.
All right, hey, he's got a thumbs up, okay. I'll take that as a good thing, Doc. Dr. Hunt, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I enjoy the restaurant. I would like to go there, and I am very uh. Excited that they can get an alcohol license also. They they will complete their uh total menu.
Great. Is there any, is there anyone from the public speaking in opposition of the petition? I don't see anyone, and do you?
No, I don't.
Any questions from town counselors? Okay, I'm seeing none. I will close the meeting at eight oh nine. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Uh, nothing. Good luck. Um, I'll I'll just call you Teen. Good luck. My wife enjoys your restaurant.
Thank you.
Mr. Rushton?
Uh, nothing other than to, uh, you know, wish him luck in opening this new business, and thank you for doing it in the town of Bridgewater.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch. Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
License tree, uh, moving on to G, license transactions petition, P O twenty-one dash zero zero six, annual renewal. Common Vic, No Alcohol, Brianna's Breakfast, Inc. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Rushton, any questions?
I have none.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None, thank you.
Any other counselors? Mr. Dutton, I'm assuming everything is in order?
Everything is in order, yes, sir.
Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Moving on to presentation, so we have a planning board update. With uh Pat Drusko, is he on? Moving on to presentation. So we have a planning board update with Pat Driscoll. Is he on?
I believe he is.
Yep, I'm here, Mr. President.
Pat, how you doing? Go right ahead, Mr. Driscoll. You're on.
Do we have a call off the planning board here? I see Mr. Jimian.
I don't, I don't think we do. I just saw Mr. Jimian.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure we don't run into any open meeting law issues.
So Katie told me I had now a slot, so I should, I shouldn't be much longer than that, right?
Your hour started an hour ago, Mr. Driscoll, so let's just keep that in mind.
I'll be very quick. So for those of you that don't know me, Patrick Driscoll, I have the. I've had the pleasure of serving on the planning board for the last seven, eight years. With Mr. Ray Ajemian, Mr. Jean Guarino, Mr. Michael McDonald, Mr. Stephen Geller. And we just welcomed the new associate member, Miss, Miss Astor Rojas. So. We almost have a complete board. We have one, one vacancy in the associate area. So, you know, I'm proud to serve with everybody on the board. I think it's a very dedicated group, very thoughtful group. We don't always agree and that's a good thing when it comes to the planning board. You know, everybody has different ideas and different thoughts and that's a good thing. Over the last year, we, like every other board and committee, had to deal with COVID. And I'd say we did so with a little interruption. I think every scheduled meeting's still going on. We've never had an issue with quorum. Twenty twenty was a busy year. I believe it or not, there's much more commercial, I think, approved than, than anything else. Even though the town gets the reputation sometimes of being not business friendly. And to be honest with you, I thought of that before I was on the board. But after serving, if things come in complete, if things come in through the proper channels. And if things are well presented, they get quickly approved. I could, I could point out a couple of commercial developments that we approved in 2020. The first one on the list is Mr. M's Restaurant. I think that was approved in two meetings. FW Web, which is a big 110,000 square foot warehouse, which is under construction, we approved in one meeting. Obviously, the Mitchell School was approved. In one meeting, we approved the Bridgewater Ranham Sand of the Stone, a new office building that's not in the construction yet, but is approved. In one meet, and, and probably three or four meetings, we approved a big flex building. I think it's approved as biotech flex space, which is going to be on the highway as part of the Claymont project, a very nice building. We approved in one meeting. An expansion of CNT, which is owned by Mr. Theoliari family. We approved an expansion of a car dealership on Elm Street. And we approved the major modification for Rawlins Steel on, on. On Plumb Street, I believe that is. So all those went very quickly. They're all well presented. And, and I think the board was anxious to get those approved. In terms of special permits, some of those were special permits as well. We only approved two small subdivisions in 2020, one of two lot and one of three lots, and not a lot on the residential side. We modified some subdivisions, minor modifications such as trees and sidewalk layouts and things like that, that they were already approved. Obviously, with, with your help, we recommended the approval of August Way. And we helped some joint meetings with. The CEDC Committee on Recodification of the Town Bylaws, which we hope to get, you know, back on track soon. We amended the planned development district, which is also known as the Claymont property. And we amended some Pleasant Street zoning from industrial to, to business be, you know, more into the gateway. So something that Mr. Jimmy and also spearheaded some of these projects, we've been getting some mitigation from. And to improve our natural environment and. The aesthetics of the town, he's been working with town manager Michael Dutton to create a tree board. And I think that's up and running and will soon hopefully be funded to replace trees and, and expand on streetscapes in town. With some of the mitigation money that we've negotiated with both the solar project. They're very generous with that. Mr. County was also very generous with a, a donation to that, I think, in the neighborhood of $7,500. Before they start the Claymont building. So we, we've done some proactive things to try to also improve the overall look of the town. You know, and I think, I, I think that's about it for past stuff. Just recently. And we approved this a couple of years ago. Mr. Morris approached, proposed a nice. Mixed use, very colonial type looking building on Spring Street. I saw that has, has broken ground. That was for a couple of residential units with an office below. Last meeting, we just approved the redevelopment of Bogats, which will be five residential units. A very nice restaurant, very nice landscaping, parking, a big patio out front. That's approved. That was approved in. Basically, one meeting and, and a little, and 10 minutes into another one because it was very well presented. And the applicant addressed all our, our issues timely and, and, and by doing so, they got a quick approval. You know, on our radar, a, as you know, we're working on the Broad Street development. We are working on the master, master plan, not working on if there's a, a master plan subcommittee and I think we'll be brought up to speed. Again, at some point, it's the way we are with that. Hopefully, we can, we can get that done. And I think the, the board is anxious to get back to zoning and, and do some recodification. So. You know, as you can see with some of these different hearings, some of the issues that we have in town aren't necessarily. You know, what, what we do or, or what staff does or something. Sometimes it's just, it's messy and you, you, you find a footnote that undoes a footnote that undoes a footnote. So. I, I think that getting the zoning cleaned up is, is a major priority. So. That's all I really have. You folks have questions and. Basically where we are, we, you know, like I said, we have a very dedicated board, very good people. I think everybody's here for the right reason. I know. You know. Sometimes things take longer than we like, but we just ask that everybody follow the rules and submit through the proper channels and. And if that happens, then things typically move pretty quickly. I just want to acknowledge one person that I didn't, Mr. Aitkins, Billy Kinsers. As an associate member, he left us in 2020. But that's, that's where we are with the, at the planning board at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Any questions for Mr. Driscoll? Mr. Wood?
Excellent summary. Is the, is the planning board, I, I know that usually a developer will bring something before the board in a. In a formal manner with a number of different documents and things, but is, is the board open to meeting with developers? Ahead of the official submission to talk about projects and maybe hammer out some items beforehand?
No, I, I don't have the zoning in front of me, but I think, I think in our rule, excuse me, our rules and regs, I think we actually encourage. Like for subdivisions, I think there's. I can't think of the word of it, but you can, you can, you could actually submit a preliminary subdivision and go over all the details before you actually submit. And I think that process is true for site plans as well, but there's, there's a formal process and I think a formal fee and everything else for subdivisions. I, I don't recall it ever happening since I've been on the board, but I know typically with special permits and things like that, I, I think it's in the language that they're encouraged to. And I think in subdivisions, we encourage a preliminary subdivision plan or are they allowed? But typically that doesn't happen. It, it may smooth out the process. It may make it bumpier. I'm not sure, but, but we certainly have the ability to do that. Might, might, might be a good thing to look into. Maybe we should make everybody do it and make things go a lot smoother. I'm not sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Driscoll? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you. And, you know, I, I've known Mr. Driscoll for a long time and I appreciate his service to the town and I appreciate. Actually, everything that his, he brings to town based on his family's contribution to town over many years. So. He, 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 he and I go back a long way. I, I just have to say that. But what I want to ask Mr. Driscoll. Is. From my perspective as a town counselor, because the only person by the charter I'm allowed to speak to. As a town employee and all planning board members are special town employees. Is the town manager. How can we as a town council and how can the town manager support the planning board? Or through his office and I see Ms. Burks on the phone. How could, how, how can there be better support to the planning board? Going forward so that you can do your job better to execute the policies the town needs to execute. And, and make sure that all of the rules and regs are followed. Do you have any ideas on that?
So, I mean, I, I just think, I mean, I don't think there's anything that you can, I mean, you passed the, you passed the zoning ordinance and we have our own, own rules and regulations that we've adopted. So. You know, we try to hold everybody to that. We can't waive zoning. So, so zoning, we have to stick to exactly. There's no. There's no wiggle room unless there's wiggle room, unless it says in the zoning code, there's wiggle room. There's, you know, if it says, hey, you need. An acre for a lot, it can't be one foot shorter than that. On our rules and regulations, we have some latitude. We can grant what they call a waiver if it's in the public benefit. But that's more, more for subdivision. So let's say, for example. You know, it, it didn't make sense to cut down all these trees because it was in the public good to keep them instead of putting the sidewalk, then we could waive that for that, for that reason. So if you recall up, up on. What's the name of the neighborhood off of Cherry Street, the big one? The, the Bridgewater Preserve that Long Built Homes is doing.
Old, Old Field Road, et cetera.
So I think what happened, and I think you actually brought this to my attention, Mr. Fitzgibbons, was that the, the curbing, if you recall, we talked about the curbing quickly and. And how that was modified. Basically, what happened was is a waiver was granted for the vertical curbing. It saved the developer a substantial amount of money. The developer, I then think. We, we work out, we worked out an agreement through the town where instead of putting in sidewalks on both sides and, and granite curbing. We had them do the monolithic burn because it's better for the town maintenance wise. It may not look as pretty, but maintenance wise, it's, it's, it's better. And at the same time, a lot of that savings that the developer had, he shared with us to redevelop Cherry Street in terms of drainage and stuff like that. So. I think that, you know, you guys give us the rules through zoning and through ordinances. And I think when it gets tough is when it gets like anything, it gets tough when it gets political. So. I mean, the planning board shouldn't be political. It should, we should just follow the rules and, and, and. And consider waivers when they make sense, but we can't do anything about zoning. So I don't know if that answered your question.
I, I'd like to just acknowledge that because, you know. Another one of our good friends. Who actually served both as chair of the planning board and on the town council and in many other roles in Bridgewater, Paul Sullivan. Used to always say that to me that, you know, we just apply the rules. And where, where we can, where we have, exactly as you said, where we have some discretion, we use it for the benefit of the town. And, you know, as long as, as long as you feel like you're getting the support from the council. And the town manager and the town planner and it's, and it's all kind of flowing together well, that's great. But, you know. Obviously, the planning board is appointed by the town manager. It's not appointed by the council. We ratified the appointment, but he makes the recommendation. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're supporting you guys as much as we can. And additionally, the town manager is supporting you guys and through, you know, the other people who report to him, we're supporting you folks as much as possible. So. Thank you, Mr. George.
Any other questions from Mr. Driscoll? Okay, seeing Mr. Driscoll, thank you for the time. And also I, I want to personally thank you. You've been a, just a wealth of information. And I very much appreciate the conversations we've had. I've learned a, a lot. So I appreciate that very, very much. And please convey that to your committee as well, that we appreciate all the time and effort that they put in. Just to make Bridgewater better. That's all what we're trying to do. So thank you.
They're a dedicated group and you guys, you know, you were easy. I thought you were going to ask me some tough questions. So. Thank you very much.
That's okay. We want you to come back again in a year. Alrighty.
I'll send, I'll send Ray next year. See you later.
Take care. All right, town manager report. Going on the standing item Mitchell School update. Mr. Doc?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. As everybody knows, I don't have a lot to report on the Mitchell School update, but construction has begun. We are still in line with the timeline with the completion date of July of 2022. We are, we continue to still wait for the final numbers, the final contract amounts and, and, and reimbursements and reimbursement amounts from. The MSBA from the OPM. So once we have all those numbers, I know. School committee members are very anxious to get the tax calculator back up on our website so that we can actually show people what, what we had projected. The Mitchell School would cost individual homes in terms of tax bill and what it actually will be. So it will be something substantially less than it was when we were projecting. That's the good news. But I am still waiting for those, those numbers. Next meeting is Monday, March 8th at six thirty PM.
That's the good news. Is there bad news?
No, I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have phrased it that way.
Okay, thank you.
There is no bad news. Not yet, thank goodness. The next meeting is Monday, March 8th at six thirty and the public is certainly welcome to attend. It's a virtual meeting via Zoom. And you can get the Zoom address and other info right off of the calendar on the town website. Anybody interested, and I say this every time I talk about it, anybody interested in more information concerning the school and progress and so forth. From the very beginning, right up till current can go to www.bridgewaterschoolproject.com and get as much information as they could possibly. And that's really all I have on the Mitchell.
Go ahead, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just a, just a quick question. I know you, I, I know, Mr. Dutton, you said we're on time and on budget. Are you following change orders or is the superintendent following change orders?
We, excuse me, we both follow change orders. So that's, in, in fact, the change or any change order comes before the committee. For review and about in this case. So it's slightly different than, than the academy building project, but, but not completely dissimilar. But in, in this case. Change orders do come, major change orders come before the committee. Minor, minor things don't.
And then that would be forwarded on to the school committee to approve because they're actually the contracting agent, correct?
Exactly, exactly.
And, and, but the committee is certainly looking and making sure that all of the change orders stay well within the amount that we voted for.
Absolutely. The committee is, is quite adamant. There certainly, your representatives on the, on the. Committee are quite adamant about making sure we stay with, well within budget. So I don't think that will be an issue down the line at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the Mitchell School project? Okay, moving on to COVID-19 update, town officer reopening plan.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. The, give you a little bit of an update on COVID-19. Our numbers do continue to, to decline gradually. They reflect sort of statewide and even nationwide figures for the most part. Right now, we're hovering around 40 community cases. BSU has four in quarantine or isolation, which is, is exceptional, quite, quite frankly. And I do believe we'll convert to a yellow community later this week. After being in the red for probably well over two months.
You don't have COVID, do you?
No, I've, I get winter allergies. Horrible. Don't know why. In any case, we do, the, the town offices have continued an appointment only. Model. So, so that should have very limited impact on the community. I know people are coming in to pay. Some, some motor vehicle bills and that's been frustrating for a number of people trying to get into the building. So we try to. Try to make sure we accommodate people as best we can. And we, we also have several offices still. Impacted directly by COVID, either folks that are in quarantine or isolation. So I do ask. That the public, to the extent that they're watching this, be, be patient with us as we try to help whoever needs it as best we can. So. Generally, or well, actually more specifically, our 14 day infection rate is at 5.2. It was at a high of about seven. That is trending down. We have approximately 40. We have approximately forty, as I said, forty active cases, uh, which has kept us in the red. I do anticipate, uh, that we'll drop below the five percent, um, infection rate this week. And if that trend continues, we would be below five for next week as well. And, and when you apply that, uh, those, those figures to our opening metrics, that, that puts us, uh, opening on Monday, March eighth. Um, and of course, uh, when we do open, we'd be forced to comply with occupancy guidelines and so forth. But that is, that is essentially what we're looking at in terms of, uh, reopening at this point. I think I, I have not had the opportunity to, uh, talk about this in this setting with the council. But, uh, last week we did get, uh, uh, DPH's, uh, notification that they'll not ship vaccine to local communities. Uh, any longer. So we had received some vaccine, but DPH again has said that they will not be sending vaccines to individual cities and towns. With, uh, twenty exceptions, we are not one of those exceptions. Um, but, but, uh, the vaccine that we did get, uh, we got about two hundred doses, uh, that we used to vaccinate our, our public safety officers. As well as Sprayham and BSU. Um, and then, um, we got another, uh, shipment. Uh, again, last week and we did the second, uh, follow-up shot. Excuse me. Um, we also were able to secure enough vaccine to do, uh, sixty-three, um, uh, uh, vaccinations for people that qualified, seventy-five are over at the housing authority. Um, and we will, our, our last shipment of COVID, I expect our last shipment of COVID has arrived and we'll, we'll make sure that we get the. The, uh, those folks their second shot, which is a priority for the state. Um, just so people know, phase two includes seniors, uh, now it's sixty-five and older. It was seventy-five, uh, and older first. And now it's sixty-five and older. Um, the phase two eventually will include teachers, um, other sick comorbidity. Uh, patients, um, but we will, uh, again, not be operating a local clinic since we are not able to receive the vaccine. So that's, uh, disappointing for the folks that have put together, just spent a lot of time and effort putting together, um, clinics. Um, you know, planning for them and making sure that we've got all our ducks in a row. Uh, I can tell you right, right at the point where DPH decided, made this decision, um, we were really ready to go at it. Um, go at it hard, but, uh, that's the decision the state made. They do have, they did and do have their reasons for making that mostly. Uh, issues around the supply of the actual vaccine. And, uh, so I respect that decision. I'm not happy, uh, with it. But, uh, obviously the supply, uh, so far coming into Massachusetts has been fairly anemic. And, uh, not capable of, uh, satisfying the demand for the vaccine. Anybody that wants to see the three, the three, uh, phases is certainly welcome to go to our, um, website. You can go on to bridgewaterma.org and just, just click on the COVID updates and see, see the state's phased in. Approach. I can tell you, uh, you know, we are working very hard right now, um, on other options. We're looking at a bunch of different other options. And if anything comes of those, um, I will certainly get, get that word out promptly. Um, and quickly, uh, but right now, uh, I don't have any, can't report anything on local, uh, local clinic. Clinics because we're not going to be permitted to have those. So that is, uh, essentially what I have on COVID. I'm happy to answer questions though.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Dutton. But can you just walk me through the if thens of opening the academy building, uh, fully to people? Obviously complying with state mandates. You, you talked about March eighth. But what are the, what are the if thens? And what's the, what's the rationale or? Science or logic behind the if thens? Like if we're still a red community, if we're a red community for three weeks, then we're not going to be open. Blah, blah, blah. Can you just walk me through that? And actually more importantly for the public that's watching on Facebook, all two hundred and fifty of them, I hope. Uh, could, could, could you walk them through it?
Um, certainly. So we had, um, after the first phase, uh, we realized that, um, you know, it's a good thing that all this, all the areas, cities and towns were sort of communicating with, with each other to try to figure out, you know, what our, what our approach should be. Or could be, or would be, or was, um, towards the first phase, you know, whether we were shutting down, whether we were trying to reopen. Reopen partially, open by appointment, open libraries, open senior centers, close them vice, you know, all over the place. So, uh, when the first, when we suspected that the second phase was going to hit us, uh, we decided that we needed something, uh, better. Um, to be able to, to base an opinion or base a decision on, uh, as to whether or not we should close or, or reopen. Or close to the public and be open by appointment. Um, it really, those are the three things, close completely. Open, but by appointment and then just simply open, uh, open right up. So, so we built some, um, parameters, uh, based, based on, on what we saw in the first phase. Um, uh, around when we should close and, and you're asking more specifically about when we should open. So our opening, you know, we tried to make it very simple also, so employees would understand and the public could understand. So very simply, um, you know, if, if, and I mentioned this a few minutes ago. If our positive cases, uh, for the prior fourteen day period drops below five percent for two successive weeks. Uh, meaning that essentially meaning should mean that we're in, in the yellow category for two successive weeks. Then we'll, we'll simply reopen. Um, and we'll reopen, obviously, following the, the occupancy guidelines that I mentioned. And, and, uh, you know, distancing and so forth. We're, we're outfitted in the building, obviously with, with plexiglass. I, for the period of time, the several months that we were open completely, I think people saw the plexiglass, saw the, the signage and so forth. So that's all designed, um, around the, the governor's, uh, guidelines and orders. Um, but, but in terms of, of sort of a matrix of, of reopening, we tried to make it as simple as possible.
So, so essentially two consecutive weeks of yellow, we can reopen. But if it goes back to red, we're going to close it down to buy appointment only or something worse than that, depending on how bad things get. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, that is correct. So, uh, if we had, I, I'm hoping that we don't come to it, but if we had to, uh, close again. Um, it would be, our first step would be to, um, uh, close. Uh, access to the public and make it revert back to appointment only, which is where we are now. Um, and we would look at, uh, being red for three, uh, successive weeks and, and, and an infection rate that it would exceed five percent. Uh, but less than ten.
And, and, and you, you mentioned that there were departments that were still, people were quarantining or were actually. Had COVID and couldn't obviously come in. Um, how, when, when, when we go to opening. How does that work with departments that still may be under that protocol?
Uh, if we have a department that is, uh, completely decimated, um, and, and is, you know, nobody can be in the building. Then we'll, we'll open up the building, but we'll make sure that we put out notice that, that that office is simply closed. Um, and, and the reasons why, you know, without, without infringing upon, you know, individuals', uh, privacy and, and HIPAA regulations. So, um, but we will, we'll make sure that the public understands exactly, if that happens, exactly what's closed and, and, uh, you know, project out when it would reopen. And obviously we try very hard to make sure that we, we cross train as much as possible. Um, and I can tell you the people in the building are very, um, which, which I'm quite proud of. Uh, people in the building are, are more than willing to, to help the public, uh, you know, on behalf of another office. If another office can't handle somebody or isn't there to, to take whatever paperwork or, or payment or answer a question, they do their best to, to accommodate whoever works.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate that. And I think the folks at home appreciate having, that, that you've got a plan out there that, you know. Whether it's the right plan or the wrong plan, we at least know what the steps are. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to FY twenty twenty-two budget.
So FY twenty twenty-two budget, again, I don't have too much, um, to offer here. Um, I did, uh, submit the preliminary budget by February first, uh, which continues to show a deficit of approximately, uh, eight hundred and fifty thousand. Um, we have been working on that and we will continue to work on that. Obviously we will present a balanced budget, uh, by April first. Um, just a couple notes, we had a great conversation today with the superintendent and the, and the, uh, the district's business officer. About a whole bunch of different financial items. Um, that was quite productive and I think we've got a direction forward, uh, for this year. And certainly a direction forward for, uh, on the capital side for, for multiple years. Um, our finance director, Tony Solomonti is, is, uh, working on finalizing revenue figures. And, uh, and the departments are all, uh, working on finalizing their budget submissions, which are due, uh, March ninth. And I can share if people are interested. Um, we just share the screen and show you the budget, uh, calendar. Just, I know the budget and finance committee has seen this and the finance committee has seen this, but, um, you know, the budget calendar. We try to develop a calendar with all the, all the high points or the major milestones throughout the budget season. And this is, uh, this year's. Calendar, um, there are a few typos in it, but we've got a typo. So the, the, uh, budget resolution, uh, we're hoping will get adopted. And then, um, and then the, uh, where am I? So, uh, March first, we'll do the department kickoff. We traditionally have a, a group meeting. This year it'll be in Zoom, uh, but we traditionally have a group meeting and, uh, to sort of kick off some of the high points, some of the, uh, uh, parts of the, uh, budget resolution that are really particularly pertinent to departments. Um, again, uh, Tony is working on finalizing the five-year capital improvement program. So our effort just to sort of make sure everybody's aware of what our effort will be this year and years forward is to submit. Uh, to the council, the budget or the, uh, capital improvement program. That's not a, uh, an appropriation order. That's just simply the, the actual five-year capital improvement program as we see it. Uh, it right now. And then, uh, once we get through budget process, once the new fiscal year starts. Then we would anticipate on a regular basis going, uh, coming back to the council with an appropriation order. Once, uh, free cash has been certified and allocated. So that's generally in the September, October timeframe. Um, this year will be a little different. We have the remainder, the remainder of a, um, of this fiscal year's, uh, capital, uh, to go to get through. So we'll, we'll be doing that. Um, before, uh, probably before the, uh, the budget, uh, cycle really starts up. In any case, that's, um, that gives you, uh, just a very general idea, budget and finance and, uh, and, uh, and the, uh, finance committee will, will be looking at, uh, at the budgets, uh, you know, very soon after the March ninth. Um, submission by the, by the departments. So, so that is, uh, that is sort of where we stand on. On budget, but happy to answer a question.
Any questions from Mr. Dutton? Actually, Mr. Dutton, if you can stop sharing your screen.
I was just about to, I'm frozen up. And is there a reason I can't stop sharing my screen?
I don't know if there's a reason, but I think I can stop.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
There you go.
Right. Any questions from Mr. Dutton?
I'd just like to reemphasize the point Councilor Woodman that Anna is the best council clerk we've ever had.
I think I'm the only council clerk.
Uh, Mr. Fitzgibbons, smoothest sandpaper. All right, um, Buxton update, local business support during pandemic.
Yes, which, and I'm going to share my screen again so you can get ready. Um, so in terms of Bridgewater businesses, obviously we've seen, uh, a lot of businesses struggle over the last, uh, year. Um, and there are, there's, in some cases, we've seen a lot of businesses actually do quite well over the past year. It's been an awful year for that dichotomy and, and to, uh, and certainly for the folks that are struggling. Um, this BSU closed down essentially, uh, for such a long period and, and, you know, very limited number of students on campus. You know, the, the lockdown last, uh, last spring and into summer, uh, certainly create a lot of uncertainty. So we've, um, we did reach out to our partners at Buxton, um, to give us ways we could sort of assist, uh, businesses as we come out of the pandemic. Our major focus last, up until last March was really to, um, to. Give us, you know, business recruitment materials, um, you know, give us, give us, um, data on how and what businesses would work in Bridgewater. And, and since then, we've obviously had to shift that primary, primary focus, um, to helping people get their footing back. So we've been working with them. We're not quite ready, uh, to roll out the service. But I do want to give you, uh, just an example of what we have been working on. Do this. Share my screen just very briefly again. Right. So can you see the screen? Does everybody see the map? Okay, um, so this is, we asked them to give us, um, we asked Buxton to give us, um, some, some obviously ideas. So we, we, this is, we picked two, three, four different, um, um, businesses. This one happens to be Greyhound Tavern. I'm not disclosing anything that's not publicly available. So I'm not, nor am I giving a plug or advertisement. Cause I'll show you some other, I'll show you, uh, Roach Brothers here in a minute. But you can see the dots around, um, that, that really represents where, uh, Greyhound Tavern, Tavern's business comes from. Um, and, uh, and hopefully we'll give them some ideas about where best to, uh, expend some of their marketing money. You know, by far the, the highest concentration comes right in the greater, you know, sort of greater downtown Bridgewater area. So this gives, would give them a better idea of, of how far, um, what percentage of, of, uh, people are traveling. What distance to, to get to Greyhound? Um, and, you know, I just arbitrarily picked eight miles. Uh, so seventy-five percent of their, uh, patrons will come eight miles. Um, and then, you know, obviously it trickles way off. Um, but if you, uh, you know, you can go back down and see, you know, where, where fifty percent, you know, come from and so forth. So, um, that, that's, uh, gives them an idea of whether they should start marketing on a, on a broader scale. Or, or if their marketing might be more effective, just close to home. Um, visit or, uh, origination, again, um, you know, translates a lot of those dots into, into bar graphs. And where their, their people are coming from, you know, close to eighty percent, a little over eighty percent is coming from, are coming from Plymouth County. Uh, and then obviously Bristol, Norfolk and so, so on. So that's, that just gives you an idea of where your customers are coming from, your current customers. And, and these, this happens to be pre-COVID, um, because that's what we asked them to run. Excuse me, post-COVID probably, uh, in terms of marketing probably isn't as relevant, uh, for, for Greyhound Tavern and the other businesses. So this gives you an idea of household characteristics. So what, what, who is your customer? And, and, uh, what, what does their household look like? And, and, uh, Buxton gave them. And and Buckston gave them, you know, names and codes across the ages. In this case, you know, three, a little, almost three and a half percent of the visitors are, you know, across the ages. What is that? Those are people that have kids aged thirteen to eighteen. They've got a household income of a hundred and twenty-five to a little hundred and fifty. Their ages are fifth about fifty-one to sixty-five. They own a home. They've got at least a two-person household size and they live in single-family homes. So that's that's sort of a the profile of the person that is that makes up three and a half percent. So if you come down, you'd see, okay, well, I really want to know. You know, here we go. Almost nine percent of my customers, if I'm running that Greyhound Tavern, nine percent of my customers are sophisticated city dwellers. So they're they have kids. They're they're hundred to one-twenty-five in in household income. They're fifty-one to sixty-five homeowner, two-person. And that's that's, you know, that's who who those those folks are. Which is which is actually good news for for Greyhound. Again, pushing ten percent of what's settled in suburbia. And those those are people that have thirteen, age kids aged thirteen to eighteen, fifty to seventy-five thousand. They are head of the household, age thirty-six to forty-five, they're homeowner. And and they live in a single-family house. So so that that I won't bore you with all of the the profiles. But but every every all the data that they get is sort of classified into different different groups. Interestingly, here colleges. Colleges and they call the colleges and cafes. These these folks are in nineteen to twenty-four, they rent one person and obviously single family, one person. But see, you know, since we're a college town, you can see that very few of Greyhound Tavern's existing business comes from students at BSU. So maybe students at BSU have no idea that 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 the Greyhound actually exists. And and that's a place where Greyhound could could, you know, if it decided that it was a good idea to market more to colleges, or they could consider that, you know, wasted marketing and and focus on on where the other money is. This just breaks down a whole lot of data into different easy to understand areas, marital status, you know, for seventy-six and a half percent of the folks that go in there, they're married. Obviously, twenty-one point seven aren't. People have people that go fifty-two percent of them have kids and twenty-six and a half don't. And then there's an unknown as well. So so again, I won't bore you with all of it, but there's there's plenty of household income. So their their biggest market right now is the seventy-five thousand, a hundred and thousand, hundred thousand dollar household income. And then you can see there's some quirks here. But but you can see how that that generally works out. Vast majority of their clientele own their own home. It's generally a single-family home. And you can see they generally are fairly well educated. And so I, you know, that's I could go on, but I think this gives you just generally just generally. You know, the idea, actually, this this does show you does show you visits right through twenty-twenty-one. Some of that other information is not up to twenty-twenty-one, up to current. But in this case, you can see that their visits are fairly consistent. And then once they hit, you know, February, March of twenty-twenty, you can see a lot of gaps in here. Well, that's when we, you know, everything was shut down. We didn't have you know, we didn't have anybody open. And some of those green green lines, some of those, some of those represent could represent takeout or other activity, but but a lot of gaps in there that show sort of in a graph, the pressures that a place like Greyhound was under. But here we go. Come, you know, end of June, they started to spike up. Probably reopen, probably there were some events and then continued that right right through the end of July. And then end of end of August, a huge spike. And I don't, I quite honestly don't know what I could attribute that to right off the top of my head. But that's that's why that is spotty, because a lot of curbside, curbside service won't necessarily get picked up here. So so a lot of their curbside, these periods might have been curbside. But that's you can see that's when we got into the second phase of the virus. So so that, again, without dwelling on it, that's sort of the kinds of information that are available. People that that visit the Greyhound Tavern, where else do they go? Well, not shocking that they also go to Cumbie's right on Main Street there. But they also go, they tend to go to the mall in Braintree. So again, if you were looking to to advertise, you know, you might look at this and say, hey, you know, maybe it's it's a good opportunity for me to get a some kind of one of those moving placards in the in the lobbies of of the Braintree Mall. So that's that's I just picked Greyhound because that was new business, relatively new business and fairly easy to do. I will. This one is actually very interesting because it's the road comparison between Roach Brothers and Market Basket. So there's there is the draw to Roach Brothers that you can see. And I'll show you a market that the people that go to Market Basket in in West Bridgewater. There there's Market Basket. So you can see the dramatic difference between the draw, the draw. The draw that Roach Brothers has and the draw that Market Basket has in the Bridgewater area. And I, you know, I won't go through the whole the whole thing again. But but in this case, we do a direct comparison. And you can see Roach Brothers, you know, the type of type of households going to Roach Brothers versus going to Market Basket. And you can follow that right down. So, you know, if you're Roach Brothers, you know, I'm sure large corporations such as Roach Brothers or or Market Basket has this all of this data and they look at it every day. So this is not, you know, we're not trying to to go out of our way to spend a lot of time to assist Market Basket or Roach Brothers for that matter. It's it's our effort is more local and more locally owned. But I just thought this was a fascinating comparison. So just thought I would show you that. And then Home Depot. This gives you an idea of where people are coming from to the Bridgewater Home Depot. So, you know, you can see way out Stoughton Franklin, you know, down into Pawtucket and Providence, actually coming to the Bridgewater Home Depot, which is is fairly interesting. But I will stop sharing the screen. And happy to take questions about that. But that's that should roll out within the next couple of weeks. And we'll make an effort to reach out to as many local locally owned businesses as we can. And we can cater that data to each individual business. So but happy to answer questions about that.
Any questions for Mr. Dunn? Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Gallagher, you're on mute.
I gotta ask a couple of questions now. I'm just trying to clarify Buckston is the consultant that we hired with the with the monies we approved in July of twenty nineteen. Is that is this? Is this the consultant? Okay.
I believe it's twenty nineteen.
Okay, so I thought that the charge was going to be for them to look at the buying habits of the people of Bridgewater into what we don't have. That if we had that business in Bridgewater, that the buying habits support having that type of business here. So, I mean, to me, I mean, do we need more Greyhound Taverns or another supermarket? And did so I understand it, I think you said in the beginning that the the scope of what they initially were hired to do has probably changed a little bit because of COVID nineteen. Am I understanding it correctly?
I I think it's the we're not, we're not changing the scope wholesale. I think our focus with them has has been temporal temporarily. You know, put aside so that we can focus on on trying to make sure that our local businesses, our current existing local businesses are supported as we can possibly support them. And some people may have no use for for the the kind of data that we've been able to to generate and the and the reports that we're going to be able to run. But but honestly, if it's if it's a help, it's it's now, you know, going to be fairly easy for us. If it's a help to people, we we are absolutely going to share that information. And we can share that information. You know, many different ways. We can email it, we can print it, we can do whatever. But but to go back to your original sort of question, absolutely. We brought them on to make sure that, you know, we understood. One of the reasons we brought them on was to make sure we understood where leakage was and what businesses to be able to to show those leakage reports to potential businesses so that, you know, they could they could actually see the raw data in the analysis that that shows that, you know, whatever X, you know, you know, women's clothing shop would work in Bridgewater, which actually was one of the leakage areas.
Okay, I'll wait for the final report will be in a few months or something.
It's a it's really not, there's not a final report. It's an ongoing, it's it's just an ongoing effort. And it's it's constantly updating and constantly changing. So those reports that I showed you are similar look to to what we can run. You know, for leakage reports so that we can identify exactly, you know, what we don't have in town that that would work in town.
Thank you.
All righty, any other questions?
Hi, it's Councilor Loesch. I mean, to be clear, it's a platform, right, that has humans behind.
In the platform that would provide access. And to to that point, Mr. Gallagher, yes, we signed a contract in twenty nineteen. It was for a year. And the bullet point that was on the agenda tonight was how is this platform going to be helping small businesses? Because when we were at the pitch and when we signed the contract, there's opportunities for small businesses to have that data real time since twenty nineteen. And so I wanted to understand with COVID and how it's progressing, right? We're hitting the one-year mark very shortly. How are small businesses getting access to this and how we are providing additional support from an economic development perspective, which is always a very important topic in town. So I'm not sure, Mr. Dunn, if you're the right person to answer the question. Since I don't know if Mrs. Burke or Ms. Burke would have a better response of how that how the tool is being utilized and used. But that was the specific point was, you know, we have a tool that we've invested in and it could help other small businesses for free, if I remember that part. What are we doing to ensure that those businesses are are getting those resources? So I'm not sure if we can get into that, since we've already had a separate tool presentation, but that was the ask. So perhaps maybe next week we can get to the answer that we were looking for.
Okay, so just so I'm aware, specifically, we want to make sure I'm not clear, actually, I'm sorry.
Yep. So let me let me be super clear. Buckston has a tool to help small businesses market and get, you know, people in their doors. How has Bridgewater given that tool to small businesses and how are they using it? Not to Dennis's point, the other side of it where we could do analysis for, you know, incoming things that we might need. How are we supporting small business, which local business maybe was unclear, but small business in the town of Bridgewater with this tool? And how are businesses utilizing it?
Nope, that's perfect. We can and and I I do anticipate that Ms. Burke will be at a at a council meeting to give an update on a lot of community and economic development issues. So between now and then, I she probably would be the best one to sort of lay out, lay out exactly what you're looking for. But she's also going to be in in front of us. You know, to to give sort of a sneak peek of the master plan. And and, you know, recodified zoning. So so you'll, you know, she'll have an opportunity to flesh out, you know, what I haven't.
Any other questions? All right, let Mr. Dunn know for any items for our next meeting. I do not have anything. We do not have anything under discussions. Are there any committee reports?
I'll give a quick report.
Go ahead, Mr. Gallagher.
I'll just give a quick report. The Budget and Finance Committee has been meeting a few times. The Finance Director came to our last meeting. We've had a couple of joint meetings with the Finance Committee. It's had a good working relationship with them so far in the budget process. And Anthony, the Finance Director spent last week with us at the at the joint meeting to go over some of the revenue figures that he continues to to work on. So I just want to know that want the council to know that Budget and Finance is meeting. And we've had some joint meetings with the Finance Committee as we go through the budget process. Then we'll I'll report on the resolution when it comes up later on that we voted on.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item L, legislation for action. Order oh FY twenty-one dash zero three-nine acceptance of nonrecurring revenue to capital. At their meeting held on February eighth, twenty twenty-one, the Budget and Finance Committee voted two oh to recommend approval of this measure. The Finance Committee voted unanimously on February sixteenth to recommend approval of this measure. The measure may be finally considered this evening. I want to take a motion to approve.
A move.
Mr. Fitzgibbons. Was seconded by Mr. Chase. Mr. Chase, you're still on mute. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
It was seconded by Mr. Chase on mute. No, that's my only question.
No, Mr. Chase.
Yes, I'm not on mute.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Any other counselors? All right, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch. Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none against.
Okay, moving on to item B, resolution R FY twenty-one dash zero zero three. FY twenty twenty-two budget resolution. At their meeting held on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three oh to recommend approval of this measure with proposed amendment. The Finance Committee voted unanimously on February sixteenth to recommend approval of this measure with proposed amendment. The measure may be finally considered this evening pending consideration and adoption of any proposed amendment. Any any general discussion before I take a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
A second.
Okay.
And then I'll make a motion to amend as indicated.
Second.
Okay, all right. So we are on the amendments, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I defer to Mr. Gallagher.
Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. The major part of the amendment is the initial proposal had a one point seven five percent free cash projection. The Budget and Finance and Finance Committee jointly discussed this with the Finance Director. And we voted to reduce that to one point five oh, which is what it currently is at. So the the initial resolution had it brought back up to one point seven five percent as a projected free cash target. So then that was the big, that's the big, the major amendment to the resolution.
Any questions from any other counselors on the amendment? Mr. Wood.
I just I wanted to express my appreciation for the Finance Committee for putting this together. Pretty much gave them a blank slate again. Timing's right, you know, just in time for the budget process here. And the amendments, I read through all the amendment language and it looks good. I'll be supporting that. This was an opportunity, I think, remember. This was an opportunity, I think. Remember back earlier this fall, I introduced the change into our rules to allow finance committee to speak. It would have probably been good if we had a member of the finance committee come and address about the budget resolution. I think Mr. Gallagher gave a gave a good fair representation of the of the work in progress. We've been good if we had a finance committee members. Maybe we can do that next year. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yeah, just to be clear to Counselor Gallagher. Dropping the target for free cash allows us to spend more this year, yet still put money in the bank for capital projects, et cetera, et cetera. Correct?
Absolutely. I mean, the difference, the difference based on the 1.75 to 1.50 is about 150,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we are voting to adopt the amendments. This requires a roll call vote.
That's very exciting.
It is exciting. And I think.
Sorry about that.
This is this is exciting. This is very exciting. I agree. I agree.
Somebody's happy about it.
Counselor Gallagher proposes something.
Drumroll please. This is exciting.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch. Mrs. Loesch, thank you. Mr. Chase. Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes, and I can assure you I'm not a cat.
Thank you all. Nine in favor, none against.
All right, now we're going on on the main motion to approve. Any discussion? This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch. Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to item C petition P 20 21 dash zero zero seven annual town election warrant 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wood, any questions?
None.
Mr. Gallagher.
I I do have a I do have a question and a comment if I if I can. I guess I want to make a comment and then I'll ask my I'll ask if if it's appropriate. And I'll have to support this because this needs to get approved. But under the explanation on the nonbinding question. The explanation, I think, in my opinion, is is very misleading to the public because there we never received nor has the public received any supporting documentation or studies that justifies the explanation. As far as recent changes in many states and federal laws show that public support for the delus of marijuana has changed significantly since the town enacted a ban against may retail marijuana shops. I think that's a misleading statement in the sense that we never had the opportunity that always approved, and I'm comfortable with that. I just think it's misleading. It also says it is very difficult to measure. It's very difficult to measure the current opinion in the town of Bridgewater through social media or other methods. Maybe social media, but not other methods. The method allowed by law will accurately inform the town council of current public opinion without changing any current laws. The term accurately is totally it doesn't make any sense because you have to remember that Bridgewater has about 28,000 people. 50% of those people or not even 50% of those people or about 50% are voters. So you're not accurately getting data from the public in the sense if you might be getting data from voters, but you're missing about 50% of the public here in Bridgewater. And even if we have, if we have 2,000 people that vote on April 24th, which would be a very large turnout. That's even a very small sampling. Of the 16,000, 18,000 voters in Bridgewater. So I just think the explanation is is misleading. And I I hope that the people that see this will will ask questions. But I guess my question would be to town attorneys. It's too late to amend this, right? It has to go on as is. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it I I believe that's the same explanation that was voted on at the last stage. I I don't have that order in front of me. But I believe that was the explanation placed on the last order. So yeah, we're at the stage where you all voted on the question. The explanation was in the question. There was no motion to amend that explanation. So so we're here.
Yep, that's okay. Yeah, and this is this is what was proposed. I just think it's it's not accurate, but that's okay. Just wanted to bring that up.
Any other questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch. Mrs. Loesch.
I heard a yes.
I thought I heard it.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
And we sort of we sort of.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Um, just a general question may either Ann or Jason. We don't. Do we have to get physical signatures on this? Can we do it facsimile?
I I I'll let Ann decide on that, but I would prefer actual signatures on it if possible. I we we can discuss that. You we can obviously have it at my office if it works for everyone.
I just I just wanted to know from a legal perspective, is this one of the things like we've had others where we've got to physically sign this?
I prefer it to be physically signed. Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll I'll work with Dan on coordinating it so that we can get this signed. Okay, we do not have any old business. We do have new business. Or it's the FY 21 dash zero zero five general ordinance amend section 25 committees of the town council rules and procedures. I'll entertain a motion to refer to the rules and procedures committee.
So moved.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
No, that's where it should go.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Souza.
No discussion this time, sir.
Actually, Mrs. Loesch, did you want to add anything? I probably should have given you the opportunity. That's my fault.
Yes, thank you.
Moving forward.
Okay. All righty, this requires a roll call vote. Actually, Mr. Wood.
So point of information through you to Mr. Chase. Just a question on the on the dates that are within the the ordinance. Does that fit with the dates that you got communication back from the town attorney?
I think you're referring to the to the upcoming order and not this order. Am I correct?
The.
Oh, perhaps not. I'm sorry. The I think that we learned that the in October we would need to have final a final determination as to the as to the satisfaction of goals by the by the town manager. Is that is that correct? I think that's what Mr. Mr. Rollins had provided to us.
Yeah, well, so there there are a few different kind of benchmarks in the current contract. And I think the one that you guys are discussing relates to a clause in the contract that says both parties agree to not less than 90 days prior to the expiration of the term thereof. And in this case, it was February 4th, 2022, enter into negotiations to establish a new employment contract for a period of time to provide for yada, yada, yada. So I I think that was the major benchmark that's contained in the actual contract. So I don't think there's anything in this order ordinance that is going to contradict the benchmarks in the contract. But that that's the that's the kind of major date or benchmark in in the town manager's contract.
Any other questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch. Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, move on to item B ordinance D FY 21 dash zero zero six general ordinance amend administrative code, part two, article three, section seven and 16. I am sponsoring this. This was at the request of the CPC as well as the historic district commission to change. Basically, the committee is from an advisory to an administral committee. Administral, well, committee of the town. I'll entertain a motion to refer to the rules and procedures committee.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
No, I just asked that during the procedure that the town attorney take a look at what we want to do and make sure it's incomportant with state law and the and the charter.
Rushton?
I have done.
Okay, any other counselors? This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch. Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to resolution R FY 21 dash zero zero five SER SG inter municipal agreement, reauthorization and amendment. Mr. Dutton, would you like to say a couple of words on this?
Yes, Mr. President, this is very simple. For the past, I believe, 25 years, the town has been part of a regional buying group, which has been quite successful. The the region goes out and does bids that are that any of the member towns can avail themselves of. The group has been advised that since the by its terms, under the law, back in whenever it was first passed, it needed to be re-upped 25 years later. We're at that 25 years later. So it's really simply a matter of re-upping the authority to enter into group purchasing.
I'll entertain a motion to refer to the rules and procedures committee.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Point of order. If it's a purchasing, shouldn't it be to the budget and finance and finance committees? I mean, I I'll happily do rules and procedures, but
for what it's worth, I I would suggest that the budget and finance and finance committees would be more appropriate just because it has to do with procurement.
Okay. All righty, I'll entertain a motion to remove to refer to the budget but budget and finance committee.
And the finance committee is so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Rushton?
No, thanks.
Okay, any any other questions? All right, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch. Mrs. Loesch.
I've said yes.
I'm sorry. I can't. I'm sorry. Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to citizens' comments. If there are any citizens who would like to comment, please state your name and your street, and we ask that you keep it within three minutes. Are there any citizens who would like to comment? Dr. Hunt, go right ahead.
President, I really appreciate you getting this CPC change in the administrative court before the rules committee. We see I'm going to speak for the CPC as vice chair. We can provide you with a very detailed whereas document that we prepared in September. And it was submitted to the town at that point. So I'm really happy to see this finally move forward. I appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens who would like to comment? Mr. Beal.
Mr. President, Keith Beal, 10 Fieldcrest Drive. First of all, thank you all for your service. There's no one that appreciates it more in this town than I do. With that said, it's not. It's not easy sometimes to to criticize or bring out points that as a citizen, I'm not happy, but I just think I agree with Counsel Rushton that the lodging the lodging house situation tonight left everybody dissatisfied. I don't understand. Obviously, the petitioner had a had an obligation to look at the law and the regulations of the town. But if what Mr. Wood brought up regarding paragraph three of that holds and and that's how you're going to rule, how a petitioner would be allowed to even file a petition is is just very concerning, very concerning. So I hope you find a quick resolution and clarification. Because although Counselor Gallagher indicated that it'll be a year or so till they're done to the upgrades, they may not want to upgrade if they can't get the lodging house. They may not sell the property. So I think it's important to them. I think it's important to the neighbors. It was nice to see people getting involved tonight as part of this meeting. But I just think that we really drop drop the balls at town on on everybody, and I think just everybody's leaving frustrated. The second thing, I absolutely agree with Mr. Gallagher regarding the question. I listened to you guys talk about how this question was going to be formatted, and many of you said it's important that we format it correctly. And from what was just read, I think it's pointed. And I think it is inaccurate. Obviously, it's too late, but many of you said the importance was going to be how it was laid out. And I just don't think that came through. And the last real quick thing is that some people have brought up about the Dropbox and the access of the Dropbox to pay town bills and how people who might be handicapped, you know, would have to get out of their car. And I tried to think about town properties and things like that. And maybe it can't be because of the location is far away. But I didn't know if there could be a Dropbox put behind the library right there as you head out that back way where somebody who would drive up could access it from the driver's side and pop in their their payments into a lockbox back that way. There would be no traffic backup. I don't think you can do it where the current Dropbox is because there's just not enough room for the cars to go that way. But maybe someone could consider about at least looking into that, the town manager about possibly a second Dropbox for anybody who doesn't want to get out of their car back there, right at the right behind the library. I think it's across from where the book drop is. But it's just a thought from a citizen. Again, thank you for your for your service, all of you.
Any other citizens who would like to comment? And I don't see anyone. Do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, going to move on to counselor comments. I'm going to start with Mr. Gallagher.
Mr. President, thank you. Just quickly. A lot of things were covered tonight. It was a good meeting in depth, a lot of subjects. So thank you for running a good meeting.
Thank you. Mrs. Mrs. Loesch.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you now. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, um, yes, I just want to say that as we move or continue to move to have Bridgewater be an inclusive town, we want to be mindful of language and stereotypes and descriptions of people and what they might be going through. You know, fifty years ago, my parents wouldn't have been able to buy a house because of the color of our skin. I, when I moved to Bridgewater, people went to the bus stop to let them know that a black person was moving into the neighborhood. So we have to be very mindful about the different types of people and the different types of diversity we're going to have in town. And secondly, to the point about the lodging house, you know, I would love to understand that process a little bit more closely and how we got to the point of us getting to tonight. To, A, save time, energy and money, quite frankly, of, of all, all involved. So thank you, and just happy Women's History Month, which starts on Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Chase?
No, nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Wood?
You know, the, I think everybody said everything I wanted to say about the lodging house. To me, it's cut and dry, so hopefully the process is straightened out. You know, many times we've called upon the voters of Bridgewater to make wise decisions, they decided to vote on the, on the new, the new school that we talked about tonight, they decided to vote on a number of different things, hopefully they'll decide when we get to the fire station. And, you know, we're asking them on, on April twenty fourth, the question. So I find the voters are usually educate themselves, they discover things like, you know, trends and regional areas, and, and they'll understand that Brockton has a number of licenses, and Taunton has a number of licenses, and Middleborough has a number of licenses, and they'll get that, and they'll see the news that like the governor of, of New Jersey just signed legislation this week that made, made retail shops legal in that state, so. So there's a lot of things in the news they can educate themselves on, and, you know, I trust what they do. The other thing to keep in mind is that the, the question doesn't change anything. And it doesn't even ask the counselor to do anything. But if the council somewhere down the road does decide to do something, it's in full control of zoning, so. So I heard many people say they don't want retail in the center of town. And, you know, the council can listen to that and decide not to put retail in the center of town, it's, it's that simple, but the question on April twenty fourth is just a question, I trust the folks at Bridgewater to become educated about it and voice their opinion, thanks.
Mr. Rushton?
Thank you, Mr. President, I will be brief, I just wanted to just do a quick shout out to the B R gymnastics team that just finished their season undefeated. And just to remind fellow counselors, I hope to see you this Thursday for the B C C R dice and stand up for justice presentation at seven o'clock. Thank you very much.
Mr. Souza?
Yes, I'd like to thank the individuals who stepped up tonight, become part of our committees, especially at the senior center as one. We always need good people to come join these positions and fill them, and we have three this evening, thank you again.
Mr. Columbodus?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, I also want to echo Mr. Souza's comments, thanks to Ms. Smith, Ms. Webb, Mr. Gobin and Ms. Manning for stepping up and, and volunteering for committees and getting appointed, we certainly appreciate it, I know you do, Mr. President, that you've made that your mission to get these, all these committees filled, and I appreciate that too. And I'd just like to add one thing, you know, as much as we joke about Ms. Homberg, and it's really not a joke, she does really run the council. When we, when we had the planning board presentation, it made me think about Mrs. Door, who's been there for a long, long time, and probably has more history than anyone with the planning board and understands, probably more than the planning board understands about the planning board, so I just want to give a shout out to her too. We already, we already instituted a Leslie Door Day a couple of years ago, I believe, to honor her service to the town, but it's never, it's never out of line to honor service to the town, so I appreciate her service, thank you.
I just have one thing to touch upon real quick, so as probably many of you or most of you had seen, I did release a statement regarding the, the Mass Department of Public Health's decision to redirect our allocation of vaccine doses. I got a lot of support, I did get a fair amount of criticism as well, and I want to go on the record as being very straightforward at the fact that my frustration was not that doses are being allocated to areas that are being hit hard, that need the doses, which I absolutely positively one hundred percent agree with. My frustration was we had a commitment from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for a set amount of doses that we would be able to help our most vulnerable citizens in need. That was my frustration. So for people that have kind of gone in a different direction, my sole message was if, if the Commonwealth committed to us as well as other communities, and we had a lot of people put in a lot of work to coordinate things to help our citizens, they should have delivered that, and I think we would have been understanding that it may be a long time after that, that we received more. But to bring us down that path and really, at the last minute, in a three-page letter, in the third to last paragraph, say you're not getting the doses that you were promised, I thought was absolutely positively unacceptable. And it's, it's a disservice, and I hope that the people of Bridgewater reach out to their elected officials and make sure they hear that as well. With that, we do not have executive session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Because a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.